Here we go, you guys. Welcome. First of all, thanks for being patient. Okay, we're gonna start here with the special consideration. I can't do this. I hate hearing myself talk. Okay, special consideration. If participating virtually, please mute yourself when you're not when you're not speaking. And use the raise hand feature in a participants panel to indicate you would like to speak on an agenda item. Remember to unclick or lower your hand afterwards. Please limit extenuous use of the chat feature as it can distract board members and audience members from the conversation taking place about noticed items in the meeting. Rules of participation, now this one's Morgan's very good at this one here. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. After recognition, address your comments to the chair. Comments must be related to the pending agenda item. By board rules, audience and board members have up to two minutes, or excuse me, two turns to speak on a topic. Those speaking should be concise and limit comments to one, again, one minute per turn. Those giving reports should limit their reports to three, three minutes or five, five minutes per presentations. Notes, the board may take any action on any agenda item. As required by the state sunshine law, chapter ninety-two H R S. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda by a two-thirds majority vote. Okay, called order, what time we have?
Right now, we are at seven twelve.
Okay, called out at seven twelve. Roll call. Lindsay, Alfred, Albert. Dave Barber here. Milton.
Here.
Judy.
Here.
Michelle.
Here.
Rookie Kim's not going to be here. Morgan Lee.
Here.
Louis Caldera.
Here.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Okay. Paul Robideau, I'm here. Christopher Salas. Angie Solomon.
Here.
Do we have one?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have Quan there, everybody?
Uh, yes, Chair, I count eight out of twelve board members.
Perfect. We're ready to go then. Okay, filling of vacancies on board. Do we have one current vacancy? Is there anybody interested in that? Anybody come here for that? There you go, okay. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself? By the, uh, the walkman over there. Oh shit.
Aloha, I'm Luella Kohler. I am second generation born on this island. And I just moved from Wainai to Moilili. And I'm very happy to be in town. My undergraduate is in behavior science and my graduate degree is in consciousness studies. I've served on several boards appointed and elected. And I want to be part of this board. Any questions?
Anybody have your questions for a new member? No, David? Everybody? Go ahead.
So you said, you say that you want to be part of the board, right?
Yes.
But what do you think you can bring to the community?
Well, having served on several boards before, I understand what issues are. And right now, it seems like the big issues are the bridge, the pedestrian bike bridge, and the Blue Alawai, that foundation that's doing a dual entrance to the Alawai, as well as some low-income housing that's supposedly going in to the area.
Thanks, as well.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay. Let's take a vote now, anybody? Okay?
Uh, you just need to verify our residency.
Okay.
That was done.
Yeah.
Lyndon did that.
That's right, that's right. Okay, yeah, so we're all gonna, uh, just need someone from the board to nominate her.
Okay.
Hi, nominator.
Second.
She got one there. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chair, if you may, if you're talking on the mic too.
Oh, yeah, I got it right here. So you gotta move your stuff. You're one of us now. No?
No, both.
Oh, do we have to vote, or?
I think so.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought we had. Okay. Okay. Eyes, names, okay?
They'll say the name.
Okay, Lindsay, Howard. Lindsay. Dave Barber.
Michelle. People say her name, right? Her name, Michelle? Well, close enough. Luella, okay, sorry.
Milton.
Luella.
Judy. Michelle. I don't have two Michelles, I don't know. Rookie's not here, Morgan.
Luella.
Louis Caldera.
Luella.
Mohammed.
Yes.
Uh, you have to say Luella if you want to.
What did I say?
Her name, Luella.
Uh, Roella.
Luella, it's closer. Is that okay? Okay. Uh, Paul Robideau, Luella. Christopher Salas. Who's not here? And Angie Solomon.
Luella.
There we go. There we go.
Yep, nine eyes.
Nine, we're in there. Congratulations. You can join in.
You can join in, yes.
One?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a musical performance. Yes.
Want to call it three, three.
Yeah, we have a little bit of a break here. A little bit of break, she's gonna be sworn in. And then, uh.
Okay, we're all prepared. Chair, I don't have the office in front of me. If you want to continue the meeting, I can find it. And then, um, we actually don't need to swear her in until we actually want to take any court action.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, rolling, we're moving along here. Let's see, public safety liaison, Honolulu Fire Department? Is that here? They just sent her an email, or?
Yes.
No?
Yeah, Chair, the Honolulu Fire Department was online, they had to step away for an emergency call.
Okay. Alrighty. Uh, Police Department. Cali Cal Avenue, District One.
Uh, good evening, Chair Robideau and everyone in attendance. And congratulations Luella for making the board. Lieutenant Segusia, representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One Community Area Responsibility. Uh, thank you guys for your time and patience. The information provided today, uh, the total cases for your area. For more statistical information, you guys can go to the public website, www.honolulupd.org. Uh, the statistical information for the past month of October is as follows. So motor vehicle thefts were three, previous to that was one. Burglaries, three, previous two. Thefts were six, previous month was five. U M Vs or car break-ins were one, which is down from four from the last month. Assaults is seven, uh, previous to that was four. And the last three categories, sex assault, graffiti, and drug cases were both zero for both months, yeah. Uh, so, um, in regards to the safety tip for the month for District One, we're gonna be touching on against phone scams, um, because they're, um, attacking or going after the Kupuna. Uh, usually these types of scams go through, um, they're trying to do lottery winnings, outstanding arrest warrants, uh, missing jury duty, um, the yes scam where they get a recorded, uh, voice recognition with you saying yes. Um, so, um, we're gonna be suggesting that we screen all of our calls. Uh, if it's an automated robotic call, I will just automatically hang up. Normally, if, um, as a business establishment is gonna be contacting you, they're gonna actually have an, uh, person from the, the company to call you. Uh, be very wary about heavy, um, heavy foreign accents. And obviously, the lack of information, so they're not gonna have account number information, last four of your social, your address, or your email address. Um, you can, you can cross-verify with the person you're speaking with. Other than that, um, I have no other further, um, things to report. Uh, and I'm gonna, um, be releasing back in my rest of my time to take questions from the boards. Sorry, I think the board is muted, I can't hear anything.
Area, a four-foot white thing that you can get so that I don't get a parking ticket in front of my own place. That would be really nice, I don't know how I'd do that. Do I call you, or do you do that?
I'm, I'm sorry, um, you're, the, the volume or the sound just came back on. I got the last part of it about, um, a white thing and parking ticket, I think.
Yes, yes, I've gotten two parking tickets in like three days. I've lived there for fifteen years, I mean, maybe twenty. Um, can you come? And I, when I talked to the officer that came to talk to me, I said, what can I do? He said, and I said, I have, I'm on the board meeting tonight. He said, ask the chief that that's you. And so, he said, call and ask him and to get that white strip that's four foot long so my people that rent in my building don't get tickets.
Well, um, I, I don't know anything about a white strip for, for free parking, but, um.
His name was Robert.
His name was Robert? Do you have his last name? Maybe we can, uh.
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
Yeah. Apologize, but he gave you a citation and what were those citations for, the violation?
Because my daughter-in-law parked four inches too close to something. I don't know. Cause I called, I called the police the day before to ask them to come over to show me where in front of that strip that doesn't belong to me, it belongs to the city. Where, what are, where are the things, you know? So tell me where I can't park, where they can, whatever. I don't want them to be getting tickets. And the ticket was for, it was an infraction, I don't know what that is. She didn't crash into anything.
Yeah, correct, so I think what their, um, the citation was for was, uh, four feet within the, uh, curb, yeah.
Yes.
Blocking for, yeah, four feet within the driveway. So it's easily kind of delineated, so the lowest part of the driveway as it starts to prolongate upward to the top part of the curb, that's usually the, about four feet. So usually, city and county, um, building codes, that's about four feet. So you need, your vehicle needs to be a, a little bit past that. But then, just like I said, officer's discretion on most of those types of citations. As long as the people from, um, that driveway can get in or ingress, there's this easy ingress or egress out of that a location, we'll use officer, uh, discretion in regards to that. But however, um, if it's a, if it's a phoned-in complaint, if it, if we get a complaint from, usually from the public, then we're gonna definitely cite, yeah, so. I mean, cause obviously, um, the people that call are obviously watching us, what we do. Um, we may use discretion, we may not, so, um, pretty much just, um, if you just have to have your vehicle parked, uh, four feet from the lowest part of the curb as it prolongates upward.
Okay, alright, well, yes, one of my wonderful neighbors that always park out there, and I can't usually get it, they called and said we, we were breaking the law, right? Yeah, right, wonderful neighbors. But Luella, the new person is a great neighbor, she wouldn't do that to me.
Thank you. That's Michelle.
So thank you very much for answering the questions.
No problem.
Anybody on the board that have any questions? Okay, we have one in the audience here. Yes, you do.
She ran, see that?
Hi, Lieutenant Segusia, can you hear me?
Uh, ye- yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi, thank you, I just, today's paper that there was a traffic fatality where a, um, a driver was turning left from King Street into a private driveway and he collided with moped, um, rider, and he was in the bicycle lane. So I wanted to get clarity on who can ride in the bike lane and what, who can be on the sidewalk? You know, because we have like, um, electric bikes now, skateboarders. You know, I, I almost had a collision with a skateboarder that was crossing, um, the driveway where, into the building and, you know, I, I'm not sure who belongs where.
So in regards to the bike lanes, the ones that are painted green on King Street, right? Um, everyone's gotta realize that they're bidirectional, so we, um, bicyclists can, um, traverse that, that, that portion of the roadway in both directions. Uh, so that's why anytime if you're making a left turn or you're crossing over that green section, that's why it's painted green. Um, you should always look forward and always look over your left shoulder or whichever shoulder you need to, um, because you need, the people that are using that lane, um, can, are, is bidirectional. So in regards to that, right, um, business districts, bicyclists cannot be on the sidewalk. Um, but we're gonna use some officer's discretion on that. If children are, are just riding their little bikes, you know, in that area, we're not, we're not gonna be stopping and citing them, yeah. So if you're, um, a regular bicyclist and you're traversing that location and it does have a bike lane, you have to be in that bike lane. Um, we've been having some issues with the one-wheeled skateboards, um, electric e-bikes, um, those electric scooters, um, also traversing in that, um, bike lane, yeah. So we need a little bit more clarification in regards to the law and regards to that. Um, maybe something that the legislature can bring up in January, um, some clarification. Because obviously, some of these, um, e-bikes aren't really bikes, yeah? I'm talking about these electric dirt bikes that have no pedal assist, right? So these e-bikes have pedals, but they're assisted with an electric hub that, um, allows them to traverse the, you know, the, the road and stuff like that. But we're talking about these electric e-bikes. Uh, we see a lot of these, um, people doing stunts, wheeling, going down the street, high rate of speed, some of them even faster than some motor vehicles and some mopeds, yeah? So that could be brought up in the next legislative, um, session in, on January first. Um, we're gonna recommend that, um, we're gonna be sending some proposals to some of, uh, our people, and I think Sharon Morawaki is one of them that's, uh, helping us in regards to that. And, and, and kudos to her for helping us in regards to that.
So the moped is, uh, is allowed or not allowed in that green bicycle, um, lane?
No, mopeds are supposed to be, uh, driven on the roadway. Uh, they're allowed a singular lane. Um, usually bicyclists, if they don't have a bike lane, they must remain in the far right lane or the shoulder lane. Um, they cannot be traversing down the middle of the road. Um, and, um, yeah, just so pretty much if there's that green bike lane, um, only bikes, yeah? Not no one-wheeled skateboards, not skateboarders. Um, but just realize this, it's kind of difficult for us to pull someone up there and then just watch it and monitor it the whole day. So, we, we try our best though, we, we try to keep the mopeds out of there. Sometimes vehicles accidentally get into there too, so it's kind of a hazardous situation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just have one quickie. I remember years ago, there was a, an ordinance put on mopeds that they couldn't be as loud as they are now. Uh, did they change that?
Uh, no, so there, there is an ordinance, uh, loud, um, moped, uh, loud muffler. So we do issue citations of that sort, but it's, just like I said, it's kind of difficult. Uh, some of these guys don't stop when we try to pull them over, how's about we say that, right? I mean, we don't want to get into a pursuit situation for a moped with a loud muffler and then somebody gets hurt because we're ultimately responsible for the, even the violator, yeah? So what they did was, they, they now are safety checking all mopeds. So it should be, uh, loud moped muffler should be caught at the safety check inspection, um, station, I guess you could say. Um, they should be failing those mopeds and having them to put back their regular mufflers.
Okay, anybody else, questions for Sergeant? Nope. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure having you here.
Thank you, you guys have a great night.
All right, District Seven now. District Seven. East Honolulu. There we go. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, I'm Sergeant Nishimori. With the District Seven, area includes the Makali and Moi Ili Ili. Um, for the statistics, October, we have motor vehicle thefts at twenty, previous month was fifteen. Our burglaries, um, increased, um, to fourteen. And this is from five in the previous month. Our thefts are at twenty-five, um, from the previous month of fourteen. And U M Vs are at twelve. The previous month was nine. Our total calls for service are at, uh, six thousand three hundred and eighty. Um, and these, uh, statistics for theft include pickpocket, um, purse snatching, shoplifting, thefts from vehicles, deaths from bicycle, theft of bicycles, theft from building, theft of coin machines, and other thefts. Our safety tip for the month is for our businesses. And, um, I emailed this, so if they wanna, you guys wanna disseminate it later, there's a lot. Um, some of the safety tips are to get alarms, um, make sure your properties are well lit. And the reason I'm bringing up these are, there have been a lot of, uh, smash-and-grab type of burglaries, um, that have increased, uh, over the past few months. Um, and it was brought to my attention that, uh, some of the problems with the burglaries, um, business owners are leaving lock boxes. Um, it's those little black ones, um, that can be accessed through a combination. Um, we want to let these businesses know to kind of stay away from these, cause they are cutting these things off, breaking into them, and then accessing the businesses. Um, if not, that's all I have. And I can take any questions at this time.
Anybody on the board, questions? 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 Anybody in the audience? Question? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great evening. Take care.
Okay, next, we're going to the Board of Water Supply. Is anybody there from the board?
Yes, yes, Steven Norstrom here from the Board of Water Supply. And for our monthly report for this month, there was no main breaks in the Makali Neighborhood Board District. And our monthly announcement is that we are launching our 2024 poster and poetry contest. It's open to grades K through six. Our poetry contest is open to those in grade seven through twelve. And this year, very exciting, our theme is, "Our Water, Our Home." And the deadline to enter will be February twenty-eighth of next year, 2024. And more information can be found on our website, boardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. And that is our announcement.
Okay, Morgan?
Hello, I just wanted to thank you guys for the presentation last month about the rate increase. And I know there was a discussion period, um, that wrapped up shortly after that presentation. When will the announcement of the new rates be up?
Good question, so we have a public hearing, it's gonna be on November twenty-seventh. It's gonna be during our board meeting at two o'clock. And that's gonna be, um, during that meeting, our Board of Directors will decide, um, whether if we'll move forward with the rates or if they'll make any kind of modifications. But the rates, as you remember from our last presentation, once approved are set to go into effect February first of next year, 2024.
Okay, so we should, if we're curious, what exactly will go into effect, we'll find out at the end of November, then.
Yes, yes, correct, after that public hearing meeting, if anything is changed, if it doesn't go through, if the board decides to make any kind of modifications, yes, that will be announced after that meeting on the twenty-seventh. But you are invited, if you'd like to come to share your, um, comments or suggestions during that meeting, we will have that public hearing available and open to, um, all of, all community members.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Do we have any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome, have a good day, thank you.
Next, the Mayor's Representative.
Aloha, everyone, I'm Mike O'Keefe with the Department of Environmental Services and Mayor's Representative. Uh, just first, a few announcements. Um, the Mayor's Newsletter for November is published. Um, the link to the newsletter is www dot onealahu dot org slash, forward slash newsletter. Uh, and it contains, uh, several stories, uh, including updates on, uh, the city's affordable housing, housing initiatives, uh, information on Oahu's wildfire prevention efforts, um, details on a one-million-dollar grant awarded to the Mayor's Office of Cult, Culture and the Arts, um, and invitation, um, to provide input on the city's Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency's new, uh, climate strategy. And lastly, um, information on city services that are expanding in Kapale, including extended hours at the Satellite City Hall in Kapale and a brand-new, uh, refuse and recycling convenience center. Um, also, uh, an announcement, uh, the Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board Assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Uh, Neighborhood Assistants help coordinate with the Neighborhood Board Chairs and produce written reports to members of the public. Um, if you're interested, you can please send your resume to nco@honolulu.gov or call the Neighborhood Commission Office at, uh, eight oh eight, seven six eight, three seven one zero. Uh, just, um, a couple of follow-up items from the last meeting. Um, there was a question, uh, about, um, restricted parking zones. Specifically, the question was, there is a restricted parking, sorry, there is a restricted vehicle parking permit pilot program in Kalihii that may have been proposed by, uh, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam. Uh, can something like this be done in Moi Ili Ili, given the limited parking situation? Uh, the city's Department of Transportation Services responded. Residents who are interested in having their neighborhood considered for restricted parking zone can email RPZ, as in Restricted Parking Zone, rpz@honolulu.gov, uh, with their neighborhood request. It will be added to the list of neighborhoods that will undergo an evaluation. Uh, Department of Transportation Services, um, by ordinance, may not establish more than one new RPZ Restricted Parking Zone each calendar year. So there is a limitation on that. Um, next question was, uh, what is the status of the city's use of the former Tokai University Building? Uh, the city's Office of Housing responded to that. Um, the Waikiki, um, that's going to be the Waikiki Vista Project. The Waikiki Vista will be, uh, undergoing minor repairs to ready the floors for occupancy in the next few months. Uh, the city's Department of Community Services is working with the statewide Office of Homelessness and Housing Solutions to partner with a nonprofit service provider to assist low-income to moderate-income households that may qualify for housing at the Waikiki Vista. And, um, they told me that they would provide more information on that project as it becomes available. So I'll be, I'll be able to provide the board with, um, with more updates in the future. Uh, lastly, there was a question, uh, related to, um, uh, the Makali Bridge. There was, it was noted that there is a low-hanging guide wire near the sidewalk on the Makali Bridge, um, that poses a hazard, uh, for pedestrians. Um, can something be done about this? And so, the city's Department of Facilities Maintenance responded to that. Um, that they sent a crew out to check it out, the concern. Um, and that the concern, um, the, the wire in question is actually under the jurisdiction of Hico. Um, and I apologize, I didn't have an opportunity to look up a contact number for the right office to call for, um, I could to call at Hico to address that, that guide wire, so, um. But yeah, nevertheless, that, that, um, Hico should be contacted for that specific concern. And so, that, that concludes my, my report for this, this month. There were a couple of items that didn't, didn't. There were a couple of items that didn't, didn't, we didn't get responses on that were asked last month and in between the last meeting and this meeting that I'll be following up on in, at the December meeting. But I'm happy to take any questions right now.
Okay, questions for, okay.
Hi, Mike. I had a couple of questions for you. The first one is, which department do we contact if we want to raise concerns about pruning? I was walking around the neighborhood the other day, and there was just lots of overgrown weeds on some of the crosswalks and coming out of the sidewalk.
If, if I understand where the, where the pruning would occur, it's just, it's stuff growing out of the sidewalk or coming from adjacent properties or?
This was, one of the places I noticed it, for instance, was like at the Kapialani date and Kamoku intersection over by Ialani. There were multiple overgrown parts of the crosswalk that were overgrown.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be the Department of Facilities Maintenance, but I can, I'll follow up on that for you.
Sure. And also, if you don't mind following up and asking if there is a schedule under which that goes or how to add something to the schedule, that would be great. And then I just wanted to follow up about the wire thing. Is this something that the city can take care of? Can the city call HECO?
Probably. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I probably, we're not, I'm not personally familiar, and I'm not sure that the city is familiar with the, with the exact situation. I, I actually kind of coincidentally happened to, in between last meeting and this meeting, happened to walk over the bridge. And I didn't actually see the guide wire that, that's in question. But I, you know, acknowledged that we, we wrote a report and that somebody, that somebody did see it, and that it's a HECO issue. So, yeah, I mean, I can, I can, I, I'll give them a call and see, and see if we can, if we can, I, I at least I can call their attention to it and see what their response is, and I'll report back next month.
May I be able to respond for?
Sure, council member. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we just called the Hawaiian Electric Company to go out and check it in, check it out. So the District Five, there's a lot of requests in regards to low-hanging wires. Sometimes it's the other utilities that are using the, the poles. And that's been a problem because in the district that, District Five, we have a lot of new poles that have been erected by Hawaiian Electric. But the old poles are still there because the other services do not want to transfer it over to the new poles. So, yeah, we can contact HECL, Hawaiian Electric Company, on your behalf. Thanks, guys.
Okay, anybody else on the board have any questions? No? Okay.
Hi, Mike. Aloha. I'm standing in for Karen Lynn, my neighbor. She's not able to be here tonight, and she gave me all this, all these letters that she had sent to you, to which she wanted an answer, and you did address the problem, this the guide wire. So I will tell her that people will be contacted. Good. The other thing that she had asked you in her letter is the wall that is crumbling on the Makali Bridge, that lava wall. And she had recommended that it be fixed and also be used to make a bigger opening because people cut through the parking lot at the A'loai Community Center. So she wanted an answer to that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks so much. That was, yeah, Karen's were, were the questions that I, we weren't able to get answers to.
Oh, I see.
Before, before tonight. So I, I'll, yeah, we absolutely should have answers by next month, so, so no problem. We'll certainly follow that, follow up on that. And there, there were a couple more items in addition to the.
Right. She also asked about the bridge across the Houston ditch, which is the, it was renamed Ala'Nayo Stream. The bridge has a, has a big, just a makeshift sign that says, "Bridge is closed." And it connects, you know, the two portions of the, of the park. So she wants to know what has been done about the bridge, and you don't have the answer for that today either.
Yeah, that's correct, unfortunately. I ha, I have all of her detailed questions, and I'll, I'll be sure and get an answer for next month.
Okay, we're gonna have to wrap this one up. Sorry, you have to wrap it up.
Oh, wrap it up, okay. And then, do you happen to know why they are filling in the stairs on the A'loai Canal on the Makai side? I think it's across University Avenue. Do you happen to know?
I, I don't, but I do have that question, and we'll, we'll get, we'll get some answers next month.
Oh, okay. And then her last concern was how narrow the pedestrian walk is on the bridge. It's, you know, because of the new rail, it has gotten even narrower. And bicyclists, they are afraid to ride on the street because that corner is so dangerous. And so she wanted that also addressed, and another neighbor as well. So if you could also have some, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I've got, I've got all of Karen's questions, and so.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the mayor's rep?
Yes, I have, I have a quick question, and you mentioned over here affordable housing. I don't know if you're the right person that I should ask this, but I just want to, I just want to know like how this affordable housing will impact the homeless.
How they will impact the homeless? Well, I'm, I'm not sure that I understand the question exactly. I, you know.
Because I see right here, based on what, what I have here, it talks about affordable housing. I, I know that you kind of mentioned that. So my question was, like, how this affordable housing will help or how it's gonna work with the homeless?
The, the, the affordable housing projects, so are there, I, I'm not sure, there's, there's a number of them. And I, but in general, their affordable housing is set to, you, you can only purchase or rent the housing if you make a certain level or are below a certain level of the area median income. So that, I, I suppose that could involve some homeless folks, but typically probably not. The affordable housing and homeless issue are, are, are linked, but they are, they are also separate issues. So, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's more, the mayor's goal is, is more affordable housing, increase the affordable housing stock on Oahu. But there's, that's not going to solve the homeless problem entirely. And the city, but the city does have a, several programs that, that, that do specifically target homeless, homelessness, and not just affordable housing. And, and I've talked about some of those before, but I'm happy to, happy to, you know, provide a summary at next meeting, if that's what you'd like.
Do you want? Yeah, how do you do that for next month?
Sure, sure, yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Questions? Questions, questions, questions?
Two questions online, Cher. One from Laura Ruby and Daisy.
There we go. It's called Laura first.
Hi, good evening. Mike, a follow-up, please. DTS, you reported back when I asked about raised crosswalks or now bumps in the roadway, because we have, at the two schools, we have people that run the stop signs all the time and also run, that run where there isn't the stop sign, they're running fast through that intersection. And one is Kuilei and Wayaka for, for Kohio School. And the other one is Hehiva and University. They, it's just, it's every day, and it's all manner of people that are running the signals. Because there have been many bumps put in on Kapialani to slow people down. And I understand there's going to be some on Kilauea and other places like that. Couldn't, it's just, it's an easy thing. It's not a traffic study that they may have come out for five minutes and looked at. It's just put it in, and let's make it safer for the children. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. That's a really good comment. I'll, I'll take that back to DTS.
Okay, next. Daisy?
Thanks, Cher. Mr. Keith, my question is, I went to the A'loai Park, which is next to A'loai School and the community gardens, and I went to the edge where the A'loai Bridge is supposed to be built. I noticed there are large holes made by the chickens, looking for food or something for the chicks. I also noticed there are upward roots that are showing from the trees. So my question is, does the department, Parks Department have any science to warn people to be careful when they walk in that area? Because if you're not looking and it's dark, people are going to trip over either one, and it's not fun because those holes are super large. So I hope that Parks can put some kind of sign to warn people about what's happening there or maybe fill in the holes, because it makes it very, children can be running around, and next thing you know, down they go and get hurt. So if Parks can do something, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Daisy. That's another good comment. I'll, I'll follow up on that, too.
Okay, anybody else? We have nobody? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Aloha, thank you.
Next, we have, Elmer just walked right in here. Welcome.
Aloha, Don. Hello, everyone. Elmer Kai, University of Hawaii. Thank you. I wanted to get out of my office, as, you know, it gets up a little bit too long. I have a few announcements. First of all, we're going to have three F-22 Raptors flying over the Ching Complex on November eleventh for the football game. We're, we're celebrating veterans' achievements, and we're playing Air Force at that, that particular game. They will come right after the National Anthem, so it's around six o'clock. So just be forewarned, that's what's happening. On December sixteenth is our commencement. It's a very small one. It's a combination of both undergraduate and graduate advanced degrees. It's from nine to eleven thirty. It's pretty fast. We have about eight hundred students that will be graduating in the, in the midterms. Other things to, to be aware of, we did open up construction for the new graduate apartment complex on Doe Street, right next to East West Center. It'll be the second a private, private-public partnership. It's a unique building in which it is privately financed, but it's being run by the graduate students, not by the University of Hawaii. So it'll be, whoever is, is almost like an apartment co-op. Yeah, so it's, it's a very unique situation there. We're finally opening up Bachman Hall. It is scheduled to open up, it's not scheduled, it will open up December. But I also got comments also about the decoration of our construction. As you notice, we have hired Solomon Inos to do the artwork around our construction. We have one more, the Sinclair. We're working on trying to secure him to do that as well. It helps us, you know, cut down graffiti in many ways, and, and hopefully that's a great thing. Outside of that, Cher, I am open for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for? UH? No? No? Nothing?
Wait, wait, wait.
You're, you're safe. Anybody online? Laura?
Yeah, before you start, Laurie, I forgot about yours on. The artwork, it's going to stay in storage for a while regarding the music building. Simply it's because there is, there's going to be a lot of work on the music building. So it's going to come back out. It just needs to do a lot more work, and they don't want to kind of destroy the artwork. So I wanted to catch that with you, but go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Omar. Omar, I just wanted to know, a quick question. Of all the dormitory rooms available, that would be ones that would be certified by UH, are they, what is the percentage of rooms that are full? In other words, is it a hundred percent that occupancy, or is it less than that? You don't have to answer it now, but we would want to know.
I can tell you, we just did a board regions meeting today. It's pretty, pretty packed, almost a hundred percent. We do keep us a few open simply because COVID has not gone away. So we need to have some places that we can isolate our students. But hopefully with the newer dorms, we can do that. And I'll quite be honest, our dorms, if you've been there, it's very archaic. I mean, it was there before I was graduated from there in eighty-three, so it's very, very archaic. And when I took my nephew, I was like, oh my God, it's still here, the design. But thank you, Laura, for the question.
We have one question for you.
Hey, Morgan?
Hey, how are you doing, Elmer? Okay, I was just curious what the percentage of, percentage or number, I guess, figure that you use to track the number of international students who came before the pandemic, and then what the number slash percentage is.
That's a good question. I have to get back to you for that one. The uniqueness about pandemic is a lot of our students from international couldn't go home. And so we had to house them, and, and I was one of the fortunate, fortunate to be assigned several of them while they were here. So let me get that for you, but you, that's a great question.
Yeah, I was mostly curious just because I've, I saw some articles maybe a year or two ago that, you know, international students are choosing other schools or non-US schools, that Chinese students are not coming to US schools at the rate that they were, that, you know, sometimes there's visa issues with people's. Anyway, I'm just curious how that looks.
No, that's not a good, that's a good question, even I'm curious now. I'll get it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else last call? Nope, thank you, Elmer.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Okay, Nick, do we have the governor's representative? Do we have the governor?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Robati and members of the board. Matt Tavont, Governor's Representative. I do have one update for the board. Red Hill is being defueled as we speak. It started last month. And as of today, fifty-six million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand and thirty-six gallons of fuel have been taken out of Red Hill. And that's out of about a hundred and four million gallons total. And that process is slated to be completed in mid-January of twenty twenty-four, so in just a couple of months. So that's the update for Red Hill. I have a couple of updates from questions from previous meetings. Somebody asked how long the governor's housing emergency proclamation is slated to last. The proclamation is slated to last for sixty days, but it can be extended. And the governor has said publicly that he does not intend to extend it beyond one year. So that's the answer that I have for you on that. And then as far as the Makali Mo'ili'iili Library, somebody had asked a question a coup, a few meetings ago about why there aren't any chargers outlets in the study areas for people to charge their phones and laptops. I gave an answer a couple of months ago, but I wasn't very satisfied with the answer that I got from the libraries about that. So I inquired with them again, and I got a better answer this time from them, which is that when they did the renovations of the library, really, they were addressing some health and safety, some quite serious health and safety issues with the building and the roof. And they took the opportunity to remodel the inside, but they didn't have the funds or the plans to redo the wiring and bring the power capacity up to what would be needed to offer outlets for patrons. So that is something that they're looking at for the future, and they have pledged to keep the community updated on any plans for the library and that going forward. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Morgan?
Hi, Matt. Thank you for answering and digging into my, both of the, both of those were my questions, but I really appreciate the library one. And I just wanted to add, it sounds like you're invested. This is why I'm bringing this up, because I'm also invested. But multiple libraries, or many of the libraries don't have outlets, so I don't know if that's. multiple libraries or many of the libraries don't have outlets. So I don't know if that's something that can be prioritized. I don't know what's slated to go next when it comes to remodeling different libraries, but, um, yeah, the library is in many ways a really great place to work, but this is a huge caveat to that. So flagging it for other libraries beyond the McCully Moyalili one would be awesome. Thank you.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Anybody else have anything? Nobody. No questions tonight. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we need to make a U-turn right here for a second. Um, we have to go back to, uh, Honolulu Fire Department. We passed over those guys. It wasn't my fault, no.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Good. Okay, apologize. Sorry, we had a very busy, uh, evening. So things didn't go according to plan, but I'll read you guys the notes we have for the month of October. We had as far as fires, zero structure fires, zero wildland brush fires, four nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires, outdoors structures or vehicle fires, zero cooking fires, and we had seven activated alarms with no fire showing. Um, our medical emergencies, we had one hundred and eleven medical emergencies, two motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, nine motor vehicle ca- uh, crash collisions not involving pedestrians, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues and one hazardous materials release incident. And sorry, I forgot to apologize, uh, to introduce myself. I am firefighter three, Sharoma from ladder twenty-nine. I'm standing in for the engine captain who had to go on an alarm. And we just came back. So reading you guys the notes. So for this month, the fire safety tip and announcement, holiday cooking safely. Safety. So we want to keep everybody safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Holiday Eve rank second and third with both having nearly twice the daily average. Unattended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Some safety tips, stay in the kitchen and focus on the food when you're cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when you're cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. And if you want a fried turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use oil are not safe. These fires use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fire that has been listed and qualified by a qualified testing laboratory and do not leave fires unattended when in use. That's the notes from the Honolulu Fire Department. Any questions?
I actually have one thing I wanted to tell you. Um, this happened to a friend of mine, not just recently. Uh, he keeps, a lot of cooks keep a chopping board on the stove right on the burners that they don't use. And what happened was his cat just, they weren't home. His cat jumped up on the burner and hit the the switch and caught board on fire. They wouldn't board. So I don't know if that happens often, but I don't have mine there anymore.
Oh, I wouldn't say it happens often, but it does happen where, you know, a lot of people, after they wash their dishes, they try to dry it on the stove or they have, you know, want to free up counter space. So they decide I'm going to place it on the burner and to be honest, we've all done it, right? We kind of accidentally hit the, hit the switch or what it may be. So we, we always recommend to not place things on any of the burners if, if possible, especially if you have ones with pilotated conditions or gas.
Anybody else have any questions? Questions? Nothing? Nothing? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good holiday season.
Okay. Next, 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 next. Uh, Calvin Savinsey, home there is.
Good evening Dave. Thank you very much and all the board members and residents. I want to thank first, uh, Mike for a job well done in responding to the questions that were posed in the last month, but let me give you a heads up on the Bolo drone. Talking to the developer, they are awaiting their financing from the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Once the, uh, funding occurs, the financing, all the general public is going to see is those black tarps being put around the property at Bolo Drone. But we also did make a request to the developer and the landlord that before they do anything as far as the demolition, the residents of that surrounding area would like to see that the property be fumigated. Okay? Because of the rodents. Number two, there was a big issue here at the stadium business mall, which is between Beritania and Young Street, where a lot of the tenants are being affected by the homeless. At this point in time, some of the reports state that the homeless may be coming from Waikiki because of the WEAN C program, which has been very successful. I've also had calls in regards to what is happening once more at Stadium Park, Old Stadium Park, where you're seeing more and more of the homeless. And it's probably because of the renovations and restoration of the Moyilili Field project that we talked about the past two months. And I believe it's almost completed. So that's a good sign, but the homeless will be, you know, relocating once more to that particular park and other parks in the area of Moyilili Makali. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have. There were a lot of, uh, calls and emails in regards to traffic congestion on Kapialani and some of the side streets. And hearing this, this evening's, uh, issue in regards to, was it a person getting hit by a car making a right turn or left turn? These are the type of issues that are happening. So I'd be happy to respond to any questions or take questions back to my staff. I'm happy that, uh, we have a new young man named Andrew and also Melvia is on board also.
Okay, um, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, homeless folks, I read someplace that the, the homeless number is going down. Well, if you go to Metagold on Keemoku and King Street, you smell the butter in the air because that's where they, they made it all the time, but there are a lot of people there. Um, the pitching tents, uh, that park, it's got a lot of folks again. Calacau Avenue is shock full, choke people. It, it doesn't, I don't, I can't see it. They were losing any homeless folks. I, I would love to do something for them, but we keep saying, oh yeah, we gotta, we're taking care of it. It doesn't, uh, it looks like they're in the same neighborhoods.
Right, Dave. I truly believe that, like I said earlier, it is a community issue. But more importantly, the homeless that you're seeing today are more of the chronics. Those that decide to say to you and I, I will not go to a shelter. Those that say I don't need any medical, you know, services. And that's a bigger issue that we're trying to address, but I've been sharing with a lot of the neighborhood boards now to let us be patient to see what the courts will decide in regards to the lawsuit that was filed by ACLU against the City County on two of our ordinance. The property ordinance and the nuisance ordinance, if you folks recall. Until that particular court decision is rendered, I, we didn't want to do anything, but it's forcing our police department to take a much more hands-off approach to the homeless population. So it is a concern for all of us and I just hope that the courts will decide very shortly in regards to that particular lawsuit. Thank you.
Hey, we have, Dave Barber has a question for you.
Yes, you mentioned about the, uh, black tarps around the Bolo Drone. That's something in my mind. Kokoa Market went out of business not very long ago. And now that entire property, including the parking lot and everything is enclosed in the black tarps. You know, they have plans, what's going to happen over there?
No, I, uh, no, I do not, but I do know for a fact that one of the, uh, vendors of Kokoa Market will be relocating to Palolo, Palolo Valley. I'm sorry, but I can, I can find out more about who acquired that property. Or is it the present owner that is being developing it? Because, uh, I haven't heard anything at this point in time. The only one that we all participated in and learned a lot was the, uh, Kamia Miasu's property. Right at the lower part of, uh, Manoa, where is that, uh, was that, not Kapialani, it's, uh, University Avenue and Beritania. They're just renovating that particular property that is there. If you folks already recall the presentation made.
I was just wa, I was just wondering because when they put the black tarps all their way around, it makes it look like they're getting ready to tear it down or build something new.
And I think you're correct at this point in time. And maybe I'll go and take a look at it, but, uh, I'll get staff to check who acquired the property, if it was acquired, number one. And number two, if it's the present landlord that is redeveloping that property, is that okay for next month?
Right, thank you.
Nope, thank you very much for the question.
Uh, Morgan?
Wait, council member, could you email us since we don't have a December meeting?
Okay.
Thank you.
So Logan, can, can you get me all of the emails for our, uh, board members? Or can we just send it, just to you folks and you folks disseminate the email? Anyway, that's, I want to get it to every board member who wants a response in regards to that property.
I'll send you my email.
Okay, great. I'll do that. And the other young lady that just asked me the question that if I could send her the response also.
Hello, hey, council member. This is Logan. Sorry, my mic wasn't working. I can, uh, send you, um, mine and Paul's email and then we can disperse it to the rest of the board members.
Okay, great. That's all I need to know. Okay, Andrew and Melvia, thank you.
Anybody else? Um, oh, okay, right here. Go ahead, up to the front.
Council member, sorry to make this a little longer. Could you, in the rest of a few sentences, um, explain, um, about this legal issue between the ACLU and the city? I'm very interested in this.
Okay, the American Civil Liberties Union filed a lawsuit against the City County on two of our City County ordinances, the property ordinance and the nuisance ordinance. And that is now bef, before the courts and the courts will probably make a decision, I hope, by the end of the year. It's been over, uh, two weeks now that, uh, the case has been recessed and now the judge will probably make a decision in regards to if our ordinance will uphold some of the laws that you folks are seeing that is being challenged on the West Coast states. Okay. You're welcome.
Anybody else? Uh, do we have anybody asking questions online?
Yes, uh, we have Richard Oheisa.
Richard?
Yes, Mr. Robati.
Yes, uh, Calvin, you have a question for?
Calvin? Yeah, Calvin called me back. Sorry Calvin, I wasn't in when you called.
That's okay.
Yeah, no, what I want to know about the, uh, what I wanted to ask you is, uh, you had in your newsletter about, uh, Makiki Walkabout to the community on the homeless and whatever issues.
Yes.
Do you plan to have one for the Moyilili Makali area?
If the board and the chair wants us to do it, and I would love to have them do it, but highlight the areas of major concerns. Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I really hope so because, um, I was telling Melvia the other day. Seems like everybody's making a blind eye regarding the homeless. I mean, you pass King Street almost every day. You look at Kalakaua, you look at the Korean Park, which is the old police station. You look at Moyilili Field, you look at Eisenberg, uh, what is it? I mean, you know, let them be there. Is it okay sanitary wise and issues? You know, I mean, I just cannot believe. And another problem I wanted to ask you Calvin.
Yes.
Commercial, uh, Eisenberg Street and I know King Street is a mixed-use zoning, which is business and residential. What I want to know is in Eisenberg, there's a residential parking and there's a lot of commercial vehicles, tour, tour companies that are parking their limos and vans. They park their individual cars during the day and reserve it. And then they switch out the limousines during the night and keep it overnight. You know, my thinking is if we cannot get enforcement regarding that, why don't we make the area paid parking, metered parking? Or, or restricted time parking? You know, twelve hours. You know, I, I, I feel for the residents, you know, like that's why I'm getting very upset because there's a lot of commercial vehicles reserving the area. And I feel for the condominium owners and apartments, they cannot park there.
Well, but, let me go and contact the Department of Transportation Services. And that's why this year we had that pilot project in Kalihii in regard to what, uh, Mike stated, the restricted parking zone. That's a very difficult issue because it is the residents that's going to be buying a license to park their cars there with a placard. And it's hard because what about all the other families or tenants that need to use that? You know, on, on-street parking as their particular parking. But you're correct. I've been trying to crack down more on the commercial vehicles that have occurred up St. Louis Heights, Makiki, Moyilili, Palolo, where businesses now are doing their business from home. And they are parking their trucks, their vans, et cetera, on the public road after their work is completed. And you're correct, where the neighbors get upset about it and we're trying to look at it on a very enforcement, law-abiding citizen approach to it. But, uh, Richard, it is tough. But, uh, let me talk to DTS and Andrew is here to take down that particular question.
Yeah, can you? Because, um, this particular tour company is based out of Kalihii. I looked it up.
Okay.
And they're parking in Moyilili because it's close to
Waikiki.
Waikiki.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, thank you and Mr. Robati, thank you, uh, for my, uh, your time. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Anybody else have any questions for council member say? Nobody. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, Dave, before I close, would you like us to do a walk, walk around of Moyilili Makali?
Yes.
Okay, I can get Andrew and you and I to set it up whereby you tell me and your, your, your board can tell me where the hotspots are. But it has to be a hour half to two-hour walk now. That's it.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Okay, Representative Andrew Garrett.
Good evening, uh, Board Chair, members of the board. Um, I know you folks have a lively discussion coming on the proposed Allahuai Bridge project, so I'll try to keep this very brief. Um, I see we have some neighbors of the proposed Pahoa Ridge project on the call. Um, so I just wanted to give a very brief update there. You'll, you'll recall that they presented to you folks a couple of months ago and held the a few town halls as well. Um, I did submit a, a letter, a comment letter to their two oh one H application that's pending, I believe before HHFTC. I don't have any timelines as to when there might be a public hearing on it. But I did express in my letter concerns about the traffic congestion that this project will generate. Um, and did ask and implore, um, the city's Department of Transportation Services as well as the State Department of Transportation to try to look at things from a regional perspective and not just the single impacts from this one, uh, project. So I'm hoping that we'll have an update, um, late by the end of this year as to where they are with the entitlement process. Um, at last night's Manoa Neighborhood Board meeting, this mayor's representative did share that um, they are going to send a crew from the, uh, their Department of Facilities Maintenance over to Manoa Stream by Woodland to clear out some overgrown vegetation. Um, I know the area down by Koali Road and Wailei Avenue is probably in worse shape, so I did, uh, ask them last night to send the crew down there as well to clear out all the vegetation, um, in that area. This is kind of where, uh, Manoa Stream and, uh, Palolo Stream converge right in that area. So just want to give those two updates today and, um, of course, as always, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions for Representative?
Oh, we have one online from, uh, Kay Ishi.
Kay?
Hello, um, thank you. Thank you, Representative Garrett, for, um, um, arranging to have the stream clean up at the, um, Palolo, Manoa Stream, um, convergence. Thank you. Um, I had a question about, you said that, um, you were to, um, comment to the DOT, looking at it, um, Pahoa Ridge from a regional perspective. Um, I'm sorry, I don't, what does that mean?
Oh, regarding the traffic impacts? Typically, when a project, um, submits like a traffic study, they'll just kind of, uh, propose mitigation. Typically, when a project um submits like a traffic study, they'll just kind of uh propose mitigation just around their project area. But we know if this project is approved, that there are going to be um, you know, impacts further down by the Hawaiian Humane Society. You know, further down by where the storage facilities are by Goodyear in that area. So just asking that rather than just looking at this one project, that they look at it more holistically and try to come up with mitigation to address it that way.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Anybody else? Nobody? Yes, no? That's it. Thank you very much for coming, board.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, Representative Scott Nishimoto.
Evening, board and community members. Um, I am available for any questions you might have.
Uh, anybody have any questions for Representative Scott Nishimoto? Nobody? Thank you for coming.
Okay, happy holidays.
Rich, Representative Adrian Tan.
Aloha, good evening. Uh, my newsletter is in the chat. Um I just, one update, um, you know, the legislature is hiring for the upcoming legislative session. Um, if you're interested, um, go to the Capitol website and um the link is right on our front page to submit your cover letter and your CD. Other than that, I'm open to any questions.
I'm just looking at your newsletter here, it's pretty nice, actually. Thank you very much. Uh, anybody have any questions? We got one right back here.
Hello, my name's Drew Erickson. Um, I saw in your newsletter about the shower at Kamai uh Kamai Kai Manna Beach. And um, I was able to try it out. However, I have a little bit of feedback for you if you're ready for it.
Okay.
I found this shower ran for like an extra long time and it didn't seem to shut off. It seemed like the handles weren't quite um like fully installed or like part of it was broken off and um also the pressure was quite low. Um, if you go up to the next beach park, uh Makale Beach, and try that shower, that shower is much more better and efficient. It doesn't run as long. Um, this one just seemed like it kind of wasted a lot of water, just some feedback. Maybe they're just in the stage of setting it up still.
Okay, um, we will follow up on that. Thank you so much.
Anybody else have anything uh online? Nope. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. I would hope you have
Thank you. Okay. Senator Les Iihara. Twenty ones?
He was on uh earlier, but I think he left.
Okay. Uh, Senator Carol Fukunaga.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. Aloha, mai kako. My name is Trisha Koo. And I am Senator Fukunaga's office manager. Um, she sent me in her stay. I provided the link to her uh updated neighborhood board report. And I had just wanted to share with you a couple of the items within her report. Um, one top topic is uh the potential financing for fire safety upgrades in older condo properties. Know that um council members Waters and Wire uh introduced Council Bill fifty-six uh which establishes what is known nationally as commercial property assessed clean energy or CPAC. Um, so that's being considered right now. Know that in um the report, there is a graphic of how CPAC works. What's really important about this bill is it um it's a program that establishes uh eligible commercial property owners to access financing for qualifying improvements on their property. Um, and to repay the investment through a voluntary assessment. Uh CPAC projects are viewed as less risky and below market capital compared to interest rates charged for regular equipment. Um, the senator is encouraging condominium residents living in the Makali, Alamoana and University neighborhoods to examine Bill fifty-six very carefully. And to determine whether the new CPAC financing mechanism could assist their condominium association in pursuing condo fire sprinkler and fire safety upgrade improvement. Um, yes, it was also noted that we are uh hiring here at the Capitol. And of course, uh, the senator's office is also looking for volunteers. For those that might be interested, I am providing my name and my email and um they can uh, you can contact me if you would be interested in working as a volunteer in Senator Fukunaga's office. And I'm open for questions, although I'm very new, so know that I might not be able to answer many, but I will definitely take them to the senator. Thank you.
Okay, anybody in the board have any questions? Audience? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, um we have uh Senator Sharon Murray-Walka.
Aloha, members, audience. Uh, glad to be here. You have my report. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One is the Makiki Stream, also another area that was overgrown. Uh, and uh I I want to, I want to send out mahallos to um to the Department of Facility Management. Uh, they are the ones who are clearing that area. So they came down to take out the overgrowth. They're also in process working on the sides of the the stream. And as you can see in the last photo in my report, uh, it is almost done, but they are now having to remove all that debris on the side. So it will be a clean stream. Um, a couple of, well, a long time ago, I was at the University of Hawaii and we we, the stream was just as overgrown. And uh, we came together with the Washington Middle School and uh McKinley High School students and their teachers, and we got a small little grant uh to teach them about taking care of the stream. So it was a great project and um, you know, we're looking at perhaps working with uh Department of Facilities Management to again have volunteers adopt the stream. I think that if people are aware of the stream and the environment and teaching them at a young age, uh, it will impact not only their parents, but the future generations. And I think it's um well worthwhile to teach our kids uh about their environment and uh taking care of the environment. So so um, that might be a project that may be coming up soon and maybe some of you might want to volunteer uh and caring for this stream in your area. But there is an adopt the stream program in the city. The other is, there are a number of condo owners, the Department of um Commerce and Consumer Affairs is holding their virtual Condo Rama on Saturday, November eighteenth. Now, this is a program that's open to all condo owners, and I think it's well worth your while to attend these because there's a lot of stuff to learn. Um, a couple of them that I highlight is misinformation affecting community associations, effectively dealing with rogue boards. Uh, there've been complaints and these are issues, I think, that many condo owners and um renters should know about in terms of living in a condo, which is not the same as living in a single-family dwelling unit. So you might want to to look into that. And um, I know that the ongoing is a task force on condo uh looking at the condo law again and and seeing whether it should be updated uh to deal with some of the problems that have evolved over time. Um, the other is that with all the fires with Lahaina and some of the fires you already see here, uh, the Hawaii Energy Emergency Management Agency, the HAIMA, it does have a plan, now a mitigation plan. So I think it's really important to look at that and and there is in my uh report uh a link. But look at that and see that that um what can be done and and input into that because uh all of us should be aware of the hazards that are around us, even urban areas. Um, and and like Mililani, as you can see, it just comes right down to the community if we're not clearing our brush and making sure that that we do clear our brush or your your owners clear the brush. Um, and so there are a couple of other other items that I have here that I thought might be of interest to you. Uh, two Supreme Court justices will be uh appointed this coming session. Uh, we are going to have a special session on November twentieth. There are two nominees. Um Lisa Ginosa, who is a chief judge of the Intermediate Court of Appeals, which is the the also an appellate court. And uh, so she's had long experience. And a new um newbie, I guess you could call him, uh, is not, hasn't practiced in the court, but has been an attorney uh in all kinds of cases, Latimer, Devens. So these two people are coming up. You might want to look at that because the courts are very important into our three, three-branch system that uh that you might want to also be wary of who's representing you on the courts. So I'm open to any questions as well.
I have one question. Um, the pictures you have up there are pretty nice, actually. One that's disturbing is the one on the far right where it's nice and clean and the sidewalk doesn't have everybody living on it.
Yes, that's, okay, so let me um say that everything's in process. So yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I have uh contacted HPD and also the Institute for Human Services, which is the um, the um homeless services group. They do outreach. Uh, and they uh, that's their jurisdiction. So I'm trying to put the two of them together so that they can start working with the homeless there. I know this has been problematic, as you heard from Lieutenant Fugucio, that it's hard to move people, but but the the law, the law or the last Supreme Court case, the Martin case that everybody points to, is that if there is a place that they can move you to, then they need to move that you can scurry them off to some kind of better place than living on the on the embankment of your your streams, which is very unhealthy and unsafe. So we are, it's a work in progress as everything else, but we are, we are working on that.
Okay, one question down here.
Alright, so you said there are some laws. Can you um say one of those laws or one that uh?
So what what you heard from um council member uh say was that there are two laws where, you know, they they can move you uh and uh like for property, they could move the property. So there are ordinances which are being uh, which are being uh, which is in court now because the ACLU said, you know, you can't just criminalize the homeless. The 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 lawsuit and the presentation by the city was was very um extensive in terms of showing that we are not criminalizing the homeless, uh that there are programs to help the homeless, whether it's drug addiction, mental illness, uh or finding them homes. And that's, that's going to be judged by the court as to whether that is really helping the homeless rather than criminalizing the homeless. And and I think that all of the programs that we have now standing up are for helping the homeless get to a better place. So it's not, if you're, if you actually are committing a crime, then you really should be charged. And it's separating out those who are committing crimes, those who are mentally ill and need help, those who are abusing drugs and and uh the Institute of Human Services, actually, we're trying to support them. They have um put together um with some state funding, a detox unit. So they can take people who are either on drugs or alcohol addiction and put them into these beds. And it's very intense because you've got to watch these people um every couple hours over a period of a couple of weeks. And the hospitals aren't doing that because it's too costly. So IHS is piloting this project and they found real success in this, I think, June, July, August. In the five months that they've been in operation. So so there's, you know, hope in terms of we have different pilot programs going on. We need to assess and see what we want to support, but I think this detox unit will help a lot of people out there who are really saying they don't want to go anywhere because they don't, they they really aren't in their, I can't say in the right mind, but they're not really there to be able to make that kind of decision. And once they're detoxed from alcohol or from drugs, uh, you see like a different person. So I think that's the hope in terms of some of the services and it's and that lawsuit says that there's nothing there. You're criminalizing being homeless, which is not the case. So I don't know if that answered your question, but it was, it's really that part of it that we're trying to work on is you've got to have someplace to put them. And and it's not, and it's not in jail unless they commit a crime.
Good question. Um, Morgan?
Thank you, Senator, for this really interesting presentation. I was wondering, when you were talking about the stream, and I understand this might be a little bit beyond what the scope of the project that you were working on there. But I was wondering if there are currently trashcans on the street where people can throw stuff away? Um, part of that is, you know, even if there are people who are homeless, who are dumping stuff there, I'm positive that other people have also dumped stuff there once they have seen like trash accumulate. So I don't know what that's current situation is, but is that something?
I believe there are. It's right by the Jack and the Pox, you know, um, right on Punahoe that turns into Kalakaua. So I believe there are trashcans, uh, and there's a bus stop there and there's, I think, a trashcan there, as I
Yeah, the trashcan keeps moving. Just to let you know.
Oh, okay. So maybe we'll tell DFF to 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 uh to get them down, yeah. Thanks.
Anybody else uh questions? Questions? One question.
Thank you for the presentation.
You can come up here.
You know, you might be talking to Mike for people online to hear. You can talk to one of the
You can share. I'll share with you.
I, I was wondering, since there are legal difficulties to um move the vagrants on Kapialani Boulevard near the Makali Bridge. There were so many tents on the sidewalk. And then one day there were none. I thought, great, wow. And now I see them all trickling in. And this is actually um quite a distant time from when they were first all gone. And so I'm wondering if 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 it was possible to ma- clear that area once, what would, I mean, would it not be possible to do that again?
So, so, yeah, and and I think it is, and it takes constant monitoring by the neighborhood. So that, you know, it's it's really hard. But every time I get a call, I call HPD and IHS or in different districts, I would call the Hawaii uh Harm Reduction Center. And and it's, it's really moving them to a better place. So so the more, and some of the the um, the the Department of Health hired um Dr. Koyanagi, who has been working in the Chinatown area. And he goes day after day after day. Um, and and you have to build the trust because they are so protective of people stealing their property and so on. So he he has uh been able to, over time, move people, but it takes that kind of commitment and diligence um by the, you know, the agencies, which we're starting to see what is effective and we've got to start supporting that kind of thing going on. But if the community sees it, and I heard uh somebody giving food, um uh enabling is really not the thing to do because then they'll stay there. And I know in in Sheridan Park and and another part of my district, there were all of the the homeless uh camped out on on uh the streets surrounding the park. And it, we found that it was the condo people who were feeding them really good meals. So they came back and they stayed. And so now that area is cleared. So it really does take a village. It really does take the community saying, okay, how can we help but not feed them? But actually bring in homeless services. Oh, and I do have, I don't know if the city has given you, but there's a whole list of services. So if you want to know about uh what kinds of services are available, I have a little brochure thing that I could pass out.
And um, are there different laws that apply to being in the park versus on the sidewalk on that green strip? Because one Because one time this homeless person I talked to, she says, oh, no, I can't be here. I have to be over here. And she moved to the side of the sidewalk. And then also somebody said that the streams are under different jurisdictions and there are not enough sheriffs sheriffs to monitor the sites of the streams. So I was just wondering why that strip on the sidewalk?
So they can't be in the park at certain hours, so they move to the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is public property. So but in commercial areas, I think there's there's some restrictions. So you've got to look at the ordinance, it's a city ordinance, as to when and where they can be. So that again, so it's not criminalizing you not having a place to live. So it's it's, yeah, it's a balancing until we find the right balance. It is difficult. And and I know that many of you, many of people call me, really are frustrated because they don't see the police say they can't do anything about it. But but we've got to create the laws and the services. So from the state side, we look at how we might stand up some of these services that are good. And some of the service providers say, you know, if they're belligerent or they're acting out, oh, you know, you're not eligible for our services. What we are looking at, the state that provides most of the funding to say, if you're not going to accept them, then we've got to look at your contract again because you should accept. There should be no closed door so that we can move people to a better place. And it's some of it is supportive services for the mentally ill, others are detox and trying to stand that up more, but moving them to get into being human again. You know, because if you're out there on the streets for more than than three months, you start degrading and that's what we're seeing is is that's the only way to cope. And we've got to move them to a better place.
But I just said one thing. We call, God, this is terrible, but we call it housekeeping. What it is is like Morili Lake Park. We'll clean up that park, all the homeless, it's all they have to leave. As soon as it's cleaned, they move back in. Homeless.
Yeah, and I think, again, it's cleaning it up and keeping it clean is really being vigilant. And so so one of the one of the things that the city, I know I'm talking about a park in Kakaako, but the more they've put in a pickleball court, they put in a dog park. And now a lot of people are using the parks. The more active or activated the park is, the less likely you have homeless because they like dark areas, they like where nobody's around. And so that's where they camp out. So so part of it is how do you get your parks more active? Because I know the old stadium park was active and, you know, and then it's sort of when the homeless come in, then everybody leaves. But if you stay there and claim your park, you know, and have more activities and use your public spaces, it really reduces the number of homeless. I do want to mention one thing, but this Mother Waldron Park, which is in Kakaako, but it may serve well to look at what the mayor was asking us because Kakaako is a state, a state district. It's one of the few state districts. So the state runs it, HCDA runs it. But he came in and said, you know, we've got so many activities, festivals and things going on in other parks, especially Waikiki, they're overrun in Waikiki. Can we come into Kakaako and have some of these festivals? So some of the discussion going on is, yeah, if you have the festivals and you've got a lot of people, you reduce the homelessness, you reduce the drug dealing that goes out in the morning. And 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 that might be a way to activate the park. So you might think about the parks that they have homeless and start looking at, hey, maybe we could have a festival here. I know you use the parks for some things, but, you know, how can you make it the people's park? And the more it's the people's park, then everybody has to share that space and not, you know, everybody's just kind of stepping aside and it becomes overrun again. So so it takes everybody working together.
Morgan has one question.
I admit there's a lot of ignorance in this question that I'm asking, but I have different friends that work in social services that work with people who are homeless. And I had one friend last year who he was laid off and a number of his friends were laid off. My friend specifically worked with people who were mentally ill and on the streets. I have another friend who works at the youth outreach drop-in center here in Waikiki. And she told me one of her coworkers is leaving and I asked her if it was because the grant ran out. And she said, yes. So I don't know if that was a government grant or if that was a private grant that the that, you know, had received. But I didn't know if there was anything done to just kind of the government could do to work with the social service providers to help them have more continuity in their homeless died so that we're not in this position where there's constantly. I already know that there's staff turnover that happens because of the fact that these jobs are extremely intense. But that at least is not related to grants not being renewed or changes in focus areas that kind of further disrupt what we're trying to really lean on to help us with these problems.
Now, you bring up a good point because a lot of these agencies are running year by year grants and trying to look at how can we improve that because there are few agencies that can provide the service. So the Department of Health has the brunt of it. Department of Human Services has another piece of it. And so looking at how they can coordinate and better serve the needy in the community and have more continuity in the service. But you bring up a very good point that, yeah, that they are looking at. But, you know, we have silos, so we've got to move the we move the silos and look at who we're serving because they're all serving the same people. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody? No?
We have a question online from Greg Misakian.
Greg? You had a question?
Hi, Greg.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Senator Murawaki. This is the second time I've seen you this evening. And just a quick one. We were we were in an earlier Zoom. Just a quick question. You mentioned the task force, the condominium task force that Senator Fukunaga is on. I raised a concern at the last meeting of that task force that it's being chaired by an attorney who often sues homeowners, condo owners. And I don't quite understand how that ever came to be, but it is the fact that it's where that task force is at right now, you know, chaired by someone who's on a regular basis suing condominium owners with the, you know, for the associations. And that concern is a very serious one because this task force was established, from my understanding, to address better consumer protections for condominium owners. When you put someone in charge of it, that is, I don't want to call him a predatory attorney, but with over 600 lawsuits from his record, and I don't know that they're all condo related, but a lot of them are. It's a concern, a strong concern. So I provided testimony, I raised that concern. I hope there's going to be a change in that task force. I think the chair of that task force should be a neutral party. And I also have other concerns with that task force and I raised them at that meeting. So Senator Fukunaga is aware of it. And for time's sake, I'm not going to, you know, bring up anymore here. But I just want to know your thoughts and opinion on just that one concern I have regarding the chair of that task force.
Yeah, so Greg, I don't really know because the task force is made up, it was supposed to be made up of people who are on both sides. And and also there's a Senate and a House representative on the committee. So I don't know what the focus has been, but it is really looking at some of the problems that you folks have raised and looking at what can we do in terms of the law, should the law be changed? So whether the the chair is a chair, which is bringing in all the comments and and working through them with the committee, the task force. I don't know what the process is, but you might want to ensure that Senator Fukunaga, and I don't know who the representative is from the House side, but asking them to assure that it is fair and it does take all your your comments into consideration as they look at changes to the law.
I appreciate that. I apologize. I just realized my background too. I normally have another background on my Zoom, but this is a WebEx. So I'm in an area where we just have a lot of things that we're doing a cleanup of this room. So apologize for the mess.
He looks interesting.
Yeah, it's a lot of shoes from Miley and some other things. So thank you for the response. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Yes, no?
Okay, happy holidays. I'll see you in January.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Now we're coming to resident community comments, okay? The next couple are going to be like that. But I wanted to say now you have one minute to talk, okay? With 15 seconds to go, I'm going to let you know it's 15 seconds. So don't think I'm being rude by doing it. I just want everybody to know it's a fair, a fair scale, okay? Everybody has one minute, okay? So I'll talk in a little bit. All right, so anybody?
I think my minute now.
Okay. Dave Barbara, you've got the floor.
Okay, I just wanted to invite anyone to come by. I decorated our building at Christmas time with lights. I live on Kuilei Street and it's a three-story building. And on December 1st, we have a little get together, a little party, party and some some food and stuff. We set up right outside, invite anybody in the neighborhood who wants to come by. And the lights come on on December 1st that night. And they stay on from dark until light the next morning. So if you if it'd be nice if you could come by and have a little bit of food with us, the food will be provided. And and there's lights on the Kuilei Street is the first street. Before you get to King Street, if you're coming up University, you make a right-hand turn and we're the first building on your right. So, okay, so I'd appreciate if anybody wants to come by and take a look. And if you can't make it on December 1st to the party, just come by anytime during December and check out the lights. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, anybody else? Okay.
I live on Laueke Street, which parallels the street in front of Iolani School. And when Iolani has a large event with parents and whatnot, they often park on Laueke Street, which is a short street with a curve on it. And there are a lot of no parking signs. These people park right in front of the no parking signs, which makes two, two, both sides of the street with parking on it. And emergency vehicles, as I understand, cannot make it down with those cars parking. I've talked to security and communications at Iolani School and they feel like they've handled the problem with the Kamaki parking lot. Judy knows the street is just loaded and it's not safe. And if I need emergency vehicles, I want them to come down. What can be done when clearly it's a school event that's causing these parking problems? So that's my concern now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, thank you very much. Okay, anybody? Anybody, anybody, anybody? Anybody? There we go. Hey. As soon as you say the first word, that's when your time starts.
Aloha and mahalo for your time. My name is Eric Teepoles and I'm representing the Center for Resilient Neighborhoods, which is also known as Serene, along with Miku Lenatine and Chris Pasqua, who are online. I'm a doctor of architecture student at the University of Hawaii. And my final project is on researching neighborhood scale solutions for resilience in Hawaii in the built environment. And I'm focusing on Makalemo Iuli as my focused neighborhood. And there are many reasons why I chose this neighborhood, but one of them is that I'm a resident here. Through my project, I got connected with Serene and they're based out of Kapilani Community College. And they work with the Urban Planning Department at UH as well as the, you know, the Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resilience. Miku and Chris might be able to share a little more about the upcoming workshop that is happening. And we would love to see you all there.
Thank you very much.
It's on December 6th.
Oh, you went over. Okay, anybody else? That was really good, by the way. Anybody? Sorry about that. Okay. He has a, just let you know, he's got a sign up sheet there. So you'll be able to get information by signing up.
Correct.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okey dokey. Next, we're out of that one. We're going to approval of minutes for the last month's minutes. I didn't see anything when I read it. I wasn't here last month, so. It doesn't seem like anybody had anything bad to say or anybody have any any questions, concerns? Or should we vote on it? Okay. All those in favor of minutes passing through?
Sorry, Chair. Yeah, if you could just entertain a motion to adopt the minutes and then a member can make a motion, another member makes a second, and then you can call the vote.
Any motion and then we'll go from there.
I want to make a motion.
Where do I hear that from?
That was Anwar Badi.
Second the motion, Angie.
Okay. So that does it, yeah?
Yeah, and then if there's any discussion, if not, you can call the question.
Any discussion on this one? Okay, let's go to a vote. Okey dokey.
So Chair, you don't actually need to do a roll call. You can just, if there's any extensions or oppositions.
Okay, any extensions?
I wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I'm staying.
Okay. Okay, no opposition? Okay, so pass?
Yeah, so the the motion that carries out with there's, I want to say, there's a 10 members present, so nine eyes and one extension.
Right. So, okay. Okay, there's no one passes. Okay, next. Now we get to the fun one. Resolution opposing any bridge over the Alaui Canal. Everybody puts their two cents in this one. I like the idea of a pedestrian bridge, but I do not like the idea of having that big thing they want to put there. I'm also old enough and wise enough to know, no matter what we say, they're going to build a bridge anyhow. I think we can yell, scream and say this, that and the other thing. I think if we got together and said, okay, we want a bridge to look like this and we're with you on the bridge, but we do not want, we want a parking lot for it, we want the
Excuse me, Chair, if I could jump in real quick. I would recommend having someone introduce the resolution if there's someone present who's willing to. And then at that time, seeing if there's any public testimony and then whether there's a motion or not to adopt by the board, then you guys, the board can discuss. Otherwise, there's not, if there's no motion to adopt, then there's really not any point in talking about it.
Okay. Who had, was it Laura had the resolution she wanted to read? Yeah, there she is right there. I think I want to go to her because she she has that and then we have another one here.
Paul, if I can ask you a question, how much time do we have? Even to just to read, how much time do we have to discuss? When when does the shutdown time come?
That's what I don't know. I don't know what time we close here. Do we have a?
Just as a general rule, I'm pretty sure that most of the public parks close at 10:00 PM. I I wouldn't know for sure this like, this is my, sorry, this is my first meeting here too. I can double check on that for next month, but I would say as a rule of thumb, just because you guys start at seven, you should usually be out three hours, so 10 o'clock.
Yeah, our meetings used to start at 6:30 and end at nine.
So I would just ask if there was anyone who was present before, if there was a hard cutoff at 9:30 or if there was usually So, I would just ask if there was anyone who was present before, if there was a hard cutoff at nine-thirty, or if there was usually-
That was only once last week, uh, last month. And I wasn't here for that.
Well, if there was anyone that was present, that knows. Otherwise, I would-
Been a hard cutoff. Um, I think they've tried to wrap things up before ten o'clock because of the fact that it does close at ten.
Okay, so that's where we're going.
Yeah, uh, my recommendation would be we should be cleared out by ten, if possible.
So we'll end this at about a quarter to ten.
That would be ideal, thank you.
So, quarter to ten. Alright, Laura.
Okay, um, uh, yes, first of all, I, thank you very much for allowing me to present this. But it, um, the board can, uh, take it in, to heart, and can rewrite it and try whatever they want. First of all, I'd just like to say, every, I believe everyone that has responded wants to have a full EIS. And that means that it's comprehensive, environmental, um, human, um, concerns or, um, that have to do with the historic, the social, the cultural aspects of the site. That's an absolute. With that in mind, the second thing is to ask, um, Mike Formby and the mayor to hold off on any kind of announcement, a calling for a contracting company to start doing the design-build. You see how we're, I think, Paul, you're, you're in, in that, having the right idea of which is, they're gonna do it no matter what. These are the ways in which we need to slow down the process so that we, as the community, can have a full say as to what we want in our community. This has not happened at all before. So, uh, with that in mind, remember, and, and by the way, uh, those people that are still on for council members say, I'd like you to have him also advocate at the council to have a full EIS. I think that would be very important. I'm gonna screen share, just take a minute.
Okay, also, um, three minutes, Laura, that's where you have for it.
Ooh, three minutes, well, maybe I can't read it in three minutes, but let me do this. I'm gonna, let me try, um, um, I'm looking for, um, let's see. This might be it. Let's see. I'm looking for, gosh, these are too small. I'm sorry. Let's see if this is it or not. Whoops, I, I lost my screen. Something happened. Gonna lose all three minutes here if we, if we don't. I cannot find anything, sorry. Uh, all of this work. Um, uh, gee, uh, can you, can anybody find the screen, the screen sharing fact? Then it disappeared completely from my-
Hi, Laura, this is, uh, Logan, the neighborhood assistant. You're sharing the screen currently. We can see the, um, testimony against the proposed bridge right now.
Um, okay, okay, that's good, okay. That's, um, that one is, um, actually, um, Luciano Minarbe, um, wrote that one. And I think I can just summarize because I'll take the highlight points. And these are all gonna go to Mike Formby and the mayor, and, uh, Roger Morton also. Is, uh, against the bridge, full EIS, uh, there's a record of past opposition to the bridge. I wrote a resolution in two thousand and seven, and there've been other things that have happened way before that time. And, um, then, um, the, um, encroachment on the park, a conviviality, uh, which is there, and I'm gonna show some pictures from him and us that we took, um, and um, the bridge is not suitable for tsunami emergency evacuation. The government was not transparent in they, what they set up, the disregard for the build, uh, uh, disregarding other alternatives. And then I'm gonna show you, uh, can you all see that? These are some of the images that are, um, that are, are concerned. The, the one on the left is all the kids after school, uh, or many of them run, uh, uh, many of their parents or run across the street to the playground area.
Fifteen seconds, Laura.
Oh, shoot. Uh, all the Micronasians at night, uh, I should say Pacific Islanders, come and have parties, and this is the place. These, the park is a hundred percent full for all of us users. Um, and then, um, finally, um, these are just different pictures of all the night activities and everything. And then, um, there is the, um, daytime use, the, um, condominium use, um, everything else.
Wrap it up, Laura, sorry.
Okay, I, I would appreciate discussion from the board and from anybody else. This is just very short. We didn't really even get any resolution up, but I, uh, would like to continue the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for putting up with this. Um, next. Three minutes.
Laura, if you could stop, uh, sharing your screen as well.
I, I've lost that button. I don't know where it is. I'd be glad to.
Should be a red button on the, near the top portion of your screen.
Good evening.
I have only quite, I have only a white screen, sorry.
Oh, Laura, gotta, gotta be someone there.
Okay, it does, uh, Luciani Minarbe, yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, on the agenda, you have a resolution against the bridge. I have not seen that resolution. What I did, I came here today simply with a testimony to give you material to see what are the issues. And there is a bigger problem that the city developed reports that are more than one thousand pages long concluding that there is no significant impact by the bridge on this neighborhood, Makali Mulili. And you represent the people of this neighborhood. And you have the obligation to really look at the issues of the impact. So, I am trying to help you, and I emailed to you. These are pages with photo, the document, each point that I raised. And I beg you to read and study this carefully for many days and weeks, and then develop your, uh, resolution, which I hope will be against the bridge. These are serious issues. I cannot go by it because you will need weeks to read these. If you have a question, you can email me. I will be glad to answer. But the, the major problem is that the report done by the city and county is deficient procedurally and substantially. Because the process was not proper in terms of planning, in spite of the one thousand pages. And substantive, because if you read those one thousand pages, you don't find my list of ten topics that impact our little, um, sub-district in Makali Mulili. I just read the topics. Public safety for the school children of Alava Elementary School. Find something in the county report of that. I send to you via email a letter written by the principal of the school. Because no one of you, I guess, went to talk to, to the school, to the community, uh, entity there, asking what is the impact of, of the, of the bridge? Today, I went to the, we are Oceania, discussing with the Micronation, what will be the impact of the bridge that come in and, and, and where they go. So, one topic is, uh, the school, the impact of the bridge on the school children.
We have fifteen seconds.
Fifteen, okay, I don't have all them. Please read them, I'm available to talk to you. I'm available to come here for a presentation, not over three minutes. It's not fair for the people and the citizens of this neighborhood to have this rammed to us by the city. It is unethical and is unprofessional, and is against the planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ekalami Logan, were we emailed the resolution? I don't, I'm very confused right now. What's happening?
Yeah, this is not the resolution. I provided a testimony.
It was Laura Ruby that had, uh, a resolution.
Thank you.
She was gonna talk about, um-
I hope to see this resolution and I-
Yeah, I didn't be in the next meeting.
Lay the door to help you out.
And then, uh, yeah.
If I have a question?
I'll talk to you. Um, okay, um, the resolution. Okay.
I'm just confused. What is the resolution that we're talking about, though?
She said, no, it does, it's, um, she wanted to read it. She, actually, she wanted me to read it, and I didn't think that was right. I talked to some folks, and it wasn't right for me to read it. Uh, and she was gonna do it there, but she started talking about something else. I have nothing to do with that.
I should do it next time.
Yeah, next time, exactly, exactly. I, that's what I was saying, next time we'll, we'll-
It has to be presented ahead.
We have, you have to, yeah, we have to do it before time, and, uh, we I mean, we could be here until midnight talking about this. Okay, so there's nothing I can do. That's what I said, one minute, three minutes, that's it, all we have. No, I understand that. I totally understand that. Okay, um, you have something you want to say?
Again, standing in for Karen Lynn, and her recommendation was, rather than submit a new resolution, my recommendation would be to re-validate and resend the twenty-twenty-one resolution. And then she had all the major points that, um, well, she is in agreement with Laura and Lucio, and she's really worried that the community is not being heard.
Next.
I guess I'm just confused as to the procedures that's going on here. Um, I haven't been involved in anything like this before, and so my question is, who brings up the resolution? Is it brought up by a community member, or is this something that is worked on by the board?
The resolution that, uh, Laura Ruby wanted to put here um, would have to be read by the board before we went any further.
So, it should not have been on the agenda tonight, then?
It's not on the agenda.
Chair, the item is on the agenda, and li- like I, I, I spoke to you earlier this week.
Yes.
A community member, Laura Ruby, asked you to put it on the agenda. You decide to put it on the agenda, uh, after I've said that you could, and, you know, you just would need to have someone present it if you weren't willing to, or it would be open for consideration for the board for, you know, action. Laura presented, um, you know, you gave her, her three minutes, and then but, I mean, as far as, but the resolution is on the, um, on the agenda, it's just, I mean, it, to me, it sounds like it hasn't been distributed or anything. I mean, the only, the only thing that, um, I've done as the assistant, I've placed it in your guys' Google Drive folder. But as far as distributing to the members besides that, I mean, that would be up to you, that would be up to Laura Ruby to make the board and, you know, to present, present her resolution to, um, the public. If that makes sense, sorry.
Yeah, I, I was, uh, what I could do on that one, right?
But can we even vote or discuss a resolution that the board has not seen?
No.
So, we're tabling this till January?
Till January.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Wait one second. Um, we will take an advisement, we'll work on it to get it in January.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, who is this now?
This is Michelle Mattson. I'm the planning and zoning chair for the- This is Michelle Mattson. I'm the planning and zoning chair for the Diamond Head, Kapahulu, St. Louis Heights Neighborhood Board. This item was on the agenda for presentation and action by your neighborhood board. This is why many of us have been monitoring this. It's a very important issue, not only for the Makalemo Eili Eili Neighborhood Board, but the surrounding neighborhood board and areas, because this is a historic site. And this bridge is interfering with the visual view planes, as well as the dynamics of each neighborhood on the Malka side. There is a huge deficiency with the neighborhood board system and the neighborhood commission office because this resolution by the chair, by, uh, the, uh, action of the chair must have been posted on your Google Drive for everybody to understand it, read it, and either accept or debate it. This has not been accomplished. We researched-
Okay, you have fifteen seconds, then.
And you have not posted this in accordance with the procedural guidelines of your neighborhood board. The presentation was cut off by the chair, which was extremely unfair. Laura Ruby has done much research on this. She is very knowledgeable. And she has been cut off and restricted to X minutes. Lucio Minarbe is a professional planner. And he needs to be heard from.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Ken Neef here. I live in the Michael Polo. Thank you for noticing, uh, the impropriety here of this appearing the agenda. Uh, you know, there's a lot of talk about fairness. Your voice is being heard. I, I have to strongly object to the way that the people opposed to the bridge have been manipulating their access to this board and manipulating the process by which this board makes decisions. Yeah, I find it undemocratic. Pardon me, I've been coming down with a cold, so my voice is not great. Uh, I'm one of the people who is in favor of the bridge and its design. And I, I've checked to the characterization that this was rammed through by the city. The city followed an open public process. The public voted for the bridge. The public voted for the design. Those people aren't here tonight because they think the bridge is going forward, and they don't know that some NIMBY folks are just constantly stirring the pot to try to get things to go their way. Thank you. That's the end of my statement.
Chair, pardon me. If I could just make a recommendation, there are other people online who are, are wanting to either ask questions or speak, but, um, to me, at least, it seems like this is the reason why a lot of people are here. I would recommend if, if you would like to entertain just allowing the resolution to be explained, so that way people actually know what the item is.
Yeah, um, we get Laura Ruby back on, let her read it.
Okay.
Okay with everybody?
Okay.
I just don't think that it's fair for us to vote on something if we're just finding out about it.
No.
Right.
By my reading, I'm gonna put it online, I'm gonna put it, share screen, and I'm gonna put it up, and then you can, um, have, have had it read to you. I was expecting, um, frankly, the chair to said I had five minutes or whatever. I cannot do it in three minutes. That was why I summarized everything at the very beginning. It was just, basically, we're just stuck. Yeah. Okay, now it's disappeared again.
Can you move a motion to move this resolution for January, please? Because it's already nine eighteen.
Somebody help me out here.
Um, Chair, Mr. Chair, do you want me to read it or not?
Chair, could I, this is Greg Masakian from, um, the Waikiki Neighborhood Board Subdistrict Two Vice Chair. I have been sitting here chomping at the bitches to say something. First of all, the, the, I think we should let Laura speak. You do have to, there's sunshine laws that you have to comply with. Uh, you're not gonna vote on this resolution because it wasn't posted anywhere. It was not posted on the Google Share Drive. I actually looked yesterday and today, and I have screenshots to show that the only thing that was on the Google Share Drive is, uh, the condorama notice. So that's another issue, but that's something Logan will have to address later. I might chat with Logan at some point at the NCO. Uh, let, let Laura speak, and then let us speak, and just let's move on. That's my suggestion. And then you can put this on agenda next month for vote.
Agenda next month, or in, sure, January.
I I, I would recommend at this time that if there, it's, it's up to the board. If a member on the board wants the motion to postpone this until January, I, I'm, then it's up to the board. If the board would like to continue the discussion now, then, then you guys, it's up to you guys, really.
Again, Chair, if I could, if I'm allowed, just to make another comment, I, I think it's only fair to allow myself, huh?
Yeah, Chair, you need, you need to let people be recognized by you, right? Like, they have their hands raised, but unless they're recognized by you, they shouldn't be speaking out.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought-
Uh, they shouldn't be speaking out of turn.
Okay. Okay.
I moved to postpone this until the January third meeting, so the board members have an opportunity to read and comment on what they're reading. And I wanted to address
And I wanted to address your, your question about can anyone make a resolution? And you asked that question when you were up here. Can anyone, uh, draft a resolution and present it to the board?
If, if there's a motion on the table at this point, I mean, we shouldn't be asking questions. We should just, if there's a second.
That's my motion.
My second.
Is the table let until January 3rd?
We got a second here.
Same thing Chair, just if there's any abstentions or oppositions.
People online, uh, board members online?
And Laura, if you could please stop sharing your screen again.
Okay.
So yeah, so motions carried then. We wait until July, January 3rd. Okay. Wait until January 3rd and then we'll put it on there and we'll read it and everybody will have a copy. I'll make sure of that. I dropped that one, sorry. Okay.
Logan, may I make a adjustment to the minutes that the meeting is on the 4th of January?
Okay, so moving along. Um, again, uh, housekeeping announcements, pertinent material arriving after the, the agenda deadlines. Just gas here. Discussion on the next agen- next agenda regarding potentially meeting online. Oelo broadcasts of the Magali, Macali Neighborhood Board, channel 49, 3rd Friday of the month, 9:00, 9:00 PM. Uh, bulky item pickup by appointment only. Reporting maybe neighborhood issues. Boladrome up, yeah, Stanford car, Boladrome, he was, he's going to come in and talk to us on July 4th or January 4th. Next regular meeting, January 4th. Uh, 7 o'clock here. And adjournment, we're done.
Night.
Better thing?